I missed 6:30.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, first item on the agenda is relative to the minutes of our meeting conducted on January the 10th. Are there any requests for modification in those minutes?
I make the motion approved for January 10th minutes.
Motion made by Richard and second by Arnie. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. The second item is relative to the minutes of the meeting conducted on January the 24th. Are there any requests for modifications? There being no requests, motion made by Ed and second by Ann. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved as written. We're going to change the order of the agenda. At this time, we are going to be calling on the matter of abundant solar power relative to a site plan and special use permit for a solar array at 5701 Bowman Road, East Syracuse. At this time, I would, on behalf of this board, thank the public for all of their input. We have heard and received correspondence from 234 members of this community expressing their opinions, their thoughts, on what we should do and how we should do it. It was a tremendous turnout. I especially appreciate the fact that the youth were involved and that we are receiving much correspondence came from youth who are still in school, who wanted to be involved in government. And that is the way for the people to be involved in the government. We sincerely thank you for all you have done. And for those individuals who opened their homes so that members of this board could go into their homes and look and see the site and get a better understanding, you went out of your way and we appreciate the courtesies that you've extended to this board. At this time, I will be announcing that the application by the solar array has been withdrawn by Abundant. This matter, as far as this board is concerned, is now terminated. Anything further? Next on the agenda, this is the application by Ryan Smith. It's his initial presentation relative to a two-lot subdivision. This is property located at 5546 to 5590 North Verdick Street, tax map number 086-2-8.0. Ryan is going to be joining us by Zoom.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Sir, we have in front of us some survey maps showing that you are looking for a two-lot subdivision. Could you tell this board briefly what it is you're trying to do and why?
Yes, I bought the property in July of 2021, two houses on one parcel. I talked to the town and at that time Randy and Lisa about the property and then realized that it had some non-conforming conditions, one of them being two houses on one lot. So the correction in the goal for me would be to try to achieve that. It appears that it had started some years ago and was never completed. So I'm trying to do everything at this point to get the two houses individual.
Ryan, as I drive by, I'm seeing that the house to the right, as you're standing on Verdick Street, looks like you've already started working on repairs.
The house on the right was remodeled. We put a roof on it. We painted it. We did the inside and that that house is all done and nice. That house was built in 1988 and really just needed some cosmetic upgrades.
Okay, and does Ed have his own water line and sewer line?
It has its own water. It is on, it has a private septic.
Private septic. Okay, and we had seen this drawing before. The house to the left on Lot A protrudes into the canal zone. And it looks from what I'm seeing here that you are going to be modifying that house and removing portions of the back wall so that it is no longer within the canal property. Is that correct?
That is correct. And the rendering that you're looking at, that was a coordination between myself and the surveyor to make sure that the proposed project would no longer encroach on the lands of the canal.
Hey, I'm going to open this to the board if they want to ask you questions about this proposed subdivision.
I've got, I've got a question on, it shows the drain field on Lot A. It does not show one on Lot B. I think the answer is pretty simple, that there is a separate drain field on Lot B. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And the county has a record of it and they have a map of it and that would be pretty easy to provide what the county has on record.
Okay, both of these lots would be in need of a variance. And have you, well, it's really the lot acreage that needs a variance at least. It looks like it has a proper road frontage. Have you discussed that with ZBA or planned on going to the ZBA?
I was expecting that tonight's meeting may lead me to that, yes.
Okay.
For that exact reason.
Okay, I guess this is just me asking the question and would like to see it on this survey. It's not an Altus survey, which I would think would have it on it, but where are the drain fields on Lot B? And I'd like to see that, I'd like to see that on the survey.
They are, and yeah, he did not draw that on the survey. Like I said, the county record, which I've seen, does show a map and it basically is between the house and the canal on the sort of favoring the side towards the Lot A. But the proper distance that they want to have between two systems is achieved. And because there's no wells, you don't have to worry about the systems being within 100 feet of any wells or anything like that, since they both have public water.
Okay, and it looks like the house on Lot B is a fairly new house? And I'm assuming that you've got an approval from the County Board of Health for the drain fields?
That was done when it was originally built. But yes, the county actually did look at that and they spoke to me about it and they spoke to my engineer about it. And the engineer has had looked at it and they've basically just said that it is a system that they know about and for all intents and purposes, working properly.
So what we can do, when this does have to go to ZBA, but we can have them, we can have him do a basic location of the two separate systems, because that would be a requirement of this board. And then the county will decide if it's a good system.
Okay.
It has to go to county to get filed.
To get, yeah.
Do they need a minimum acreage for a septic system on Lot A? That looks awfully small, isn't it?
Well, they, that, the county will decide if it's appropriate for the septic system again. You don't need to worry about that, but I believe we do need an area variance on that lot. It's not appropriate acreage.
And it's substantial. Our code calls for 100,000 square feet, so it's fairly substantial on both lots.
There was, there was a recent solution. Yeah, okay. They had to have a new system design. And that was submitted about a month ago. So we have it in file. And that's my question to the, to the health department. It was fine.
Anyone else with questions?
You probably should have a note to that effect on the plan. Somebody in a million years needs to look and wonder about it, so.
So they need to go to ZBA for the variance.
They need area variance first of all. Second of all, there's setback variances everywhere. So on the canal side, it's a rear yard setback and they would be asking for a zero lot line variance. And then front is a front yard setback.
Yep.
Yes, also.
Potentially a side yard on Lot B.
What does it say there?
I think it's 25. Do we typically do this with structures that are already built?
Well, because, because they're dividing it, we have to do it.
I have one more question.
I mean, if it weren't like something else we were doing that was pre-existing non-conforming, it can slide, but not.
There's a note with a big circle that says this area has several different subsurface utility demarcations. It is not possible to show the lines, blah, blah, blah. Is that the only place on this survey that has utility easements?
Yeah, to my knowledge, yes. That's kind of the corner of North Verdick Street where it turns. And there's a pole there, there's a traffic light, so he's just kind of making a note. There's a lot going on in that spot. Yeah.
Is there gas, natural gas to these homes?
Yes.
So there'd be an easement for that too somewhere.
I don't know. Do they do easements for individual gas services?
Well, I'm assuming the meters on the house.
The meter is on the house, yes. I just didn't realize if they do an easement. I haven't seen anything relating to the easement. I could have the D.
Okay, I'm getting two no's.
Okay.
All right, that's it for me.
I was just looking at the back of the house. He would need one there too.
Yes, yes. Okay, Ryan, what we're doing today is we're recommending that you take this to the ZBA. We have sent a referral to county for their recommendations. And we've also notified the canal authority and they're sending back their recommendations as well. The next thing we normally do is schedule a public hearing, but we're not going to do that because we want the ZBA to have free rein as to whether they want to grant the variances or not. So that'll be the next step. If you have questions about what to ask for on the variance, our beloved secretary here will tell you exactly what you need to do.
Yeah, Lisa's been very helpful. Thank you.
The deadline for that submission is February 28th to make the March agenda, March 7th, we're going to be doing the meeting at ZBA.
Okay, I intend to try to make that and I'll make sure to get my paperwork to your office and I'll coordinate with Lisa.
Send it out to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, folks, the next item on the agenda is an application by A&E and SNY Center. This is for a zone change recommendation. This has been referred to this board by the town board solely for the purpose of a recommendation relative to a zone change. This is for an intended medical center that would be located behind the old resort lifestyle. Tax map number 086-01-03.9. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Just sits on the map. Six here, down there.
Evening, my name is Ron Ives. I am an engineer with Natural Consulting. We are the site civil engineers with us. His name is Mike Papa. He is the owner of A&E and SNY Services. We are here tonight as the chairman indicated to get a recommendation back to the town board on a zone change application. The parcel is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Nutt Center Drive and April Drive. Right now, the property is located, zoned, RA restricted agricultural. We have applied for a zone change to the commercial A district. So these are the, I'll list the sort of typical services that A&E provides.
Sure. I'm Mike Papa. Good evening. This is a Med Spa Wellness Center that was founded 54 years ago. It's currently located in East Syracuse on Bridge Street with the Bone Plaza. We're in roughly 3,900 square feet. We outgrown it. I currently rent there and I've been looking for a location. I think this would be ideal. I think it fits in with the personal services that are there now. We're not necessarily a retail destination or reach out search destination. And I want to expand some of the Med Spa and the wellness services that we've provided over the years. So we do a lot of skin rejuvenation, skincare, laser hair removal, laser vein rejuvenation. And we do injections like Botox and Juvederm, wanting to do physical therapy, some more dietitian and personal training services. Bring on a physical therapist and just expand the whole wellness in the Med Spa facility that I've had there. It's been a strong business for over 50 years and I really do like that property. I think it's been attempted a couple of times on this particular lot. And I know one of the hurdles has been a couple of different, at least two different entrance ways. And I only need one. I can take that right and get away from the intersection and keep the traffic flow consistent. And then at the same time, just have a five entrance for our clientele.
So these services that Mike is proposing are not allowable use in the RA zone. As I said, it's a 5-4 acre lot located right there at the corner of the two roads. And so what we're proposing is a, it's about a 28,000 square foot building. Basically, it's a one-story building that's a footprint of about just over 14,000 square feet. And in a residential setting, considering a walkout basement. So with the topography and the steep slope, the architects are looking at and kind of tucking that building into the hillside. Coming up about the Center Drive, what you would see is a walkout basement with the one story above. From the parking lot and from Starview, you'd only see a single-story building. With this, we are also providing a 105 lot or 105 space parking lot. We've talked to Mike, we've gone back and forth as far as what the code requires and what he really needs. And right now, per code, if you break the space up between the medical office space and the personal services, we would need about 105, no, 125 spaces for Phase 1. And we're showing about 105. Phase 2, which would be medical offices, we would need another 38 spaces. In talking, Mike said negotiations or not negotiations, but talking to the owners of the medical complex to get some shared parking in that easterly section of the medical center's parking lot, which doesn't give to us. Just some architecture, Mike had an architect kind of do some preliminary work on what the building's going to look like. It's not going to be your standard commercial or office type building. Mike's planning an upscale look to it just as a architectural style. I know it's a two-story building, but we just want to present this as far as what the style Mike is looking for, not necessarily the height of the building. Free to ask questions as we go. And then as far as the interior style, something a little bit more elegant than a typical doctor's office. Touch on any of that?
Yeah, I think the trend from Med Spa and Wellness Center, similar to from Rebaugh, it's really got to be an attractive exterior. I want a nice architectural presentation. We come in and obviously the services that we provide, it's got to be very clean. If we want to expand those services and I just think it'd be a premier area to have as you drive in, you look up on Hill there with five entrance. It really does need to be a high end for us to grow the business.
So we have done some preliminary site work or site design to get an idea of, can this fit? Will this work? We have done a preliminary stormwater report. So all we're looking at is that the, with the building and phase, for phase one and phase two, we're located on the southerly property line. Everything will bring to the northeast corner. If you're familiar with the site, obviously it sits at the top of the hill. We don't want to impact either the Starview neighbors, the town center retirement community or the drainage system within Medical Center Drive. So what we're looking at. There's an existing culvert at the southwest corner that crosses Medical Center Drive and then open discharges to a swell that continues along in a southwestern direction. And then actually discharges south of the medical center. So that's the safest spot as far as to keep the flooding to, well, to eliminate any flooding concerns. We've looked at, we're going to make this a 100-year flow after the proposed development occurs squash it down to that 10-year flow, which is typically what that culvert is going to be designed for. So we're not going to adversely affect that anyway as far as stormwater. Because of the soils, they're highly permeable, so the water quality treatment, runoff production volume, we're going to use infiltration basins up there to take care of the minor storms. Or we would typically, I shouldn't say. In the past, we would call it first flush. Now it's that one-inch rainstorm. With the intensity of storms these days, that one-inch rainstorm is about that, but they consider it 90% that's storm. Which is why we have to design the water quality runoff production. I've given in the binders, I think you all received a copy. I know. There is that preliminary stormwater report in there. Comments from your engineer as far as those go. And the site also will be connected to public sewer and public water. Sewer I'm showing here in red, so that connection's actually to the north. We have to extend the sewer a bit to get up there. And then the water line is in yellow and that just connects right along either drive.
I've got a question in this. When we approved Resort Lifestyle, we asked them to bank, let's see, the 40 or 50 parking spots on the upper level and F.
No, they weren't banked on the upper level.
Yeah, they were.
No, they were not. They were banked in this area here and we would rebuild the retaining wall. I don't need, just because I was involved in that project.
So was I. I thought it was on the upper level.
Banked them down here.
You mean they're part of that other site plan?
The bank parking is part of the town center retirement. They're not sold. What we proposed at that time with town center was there's a retaining wall here. We would rebuild that back in here so we could put that additional park if and when it were ever needed. If you look at the parking counts now, the way that is working is they're not going to need that parking.
It shouldn't affect the zone change. I just, I was raising it just because it's probably an item that needs to be cleaned up. Lisa, you were, I think you were the clerk at the time and maybe just take a quick look at that just to confirm that that's where it was. And Resort was going to do a traffic study. I've been up there several times. I don't think they need the parking, but I think we have to go through the process to do away with it. Hopefully, it is on Resort's property. If not, we still should do away with it if you're doing something up above. But I'll take your word that it is there.
Yeah, just as far as, just terminology, I'd rather not call it a traffic report because that deals with streets.
We agreed to something.
Yeah, I remember. Yeah, no, we could certainly provide that. You know, they're, I think they're 90% now as far as their occupancy.
But bare minimum, it would mandate revising the site plan for residential, for that community.
Well, only if the parking is shown up on top. I don't think it is though. I mean, the reserve parking.
If you're.
Here, so.
If you're changing where the wallet, where the height is.
Oh, we're not.
It's going to, well, you're telling me we're going to eliminate the need for 40.
But we're not saying we're building those parks.
I think what Joe's saying is it was part of the site plan. It was part of the site plan approval. So that site plan approval would have to be done. Should you get your zone change, it should just come in.
But I'm saying the site plan was approved with the parking, reserve parking being shown out here.
Right.
Right. So that lower level needs a revised site plan.
But that's not really his, that's not why they're here. Right. So maybe Lisa, if you could just check to make sure that's in fact where it was on that site plan, then we don't really have an issue with the upper.
Man, how do you deal with the fact that the adjoining neighbors to the northwest, Starview, are aware that this is zoned RA and they were anticipating that that would be used if, if in fact developed, it would be developed for residential purposes?
I don't know if that's what they ever anticipated. I've got the Resort Lifestyle, which I know they had arguments over as far as the scope of that. I mean, it's a multi-family, I mean, you consider it's a RM. You know, I mean, we've got a proposed project. We're, you know, we're going to see what they have to say and answer their questions.
I'm kind of just wondering.
Into the scope and what the intent of this area is. I mean, you've got a large medical center just to the left.
But just to the south, on the south side of Medical Center Drive, we have property that is properly zoned for what you're trying to do. My question is, did you consider that?
This cross street. Cross street is still RA. This lot, you mean this lot here?
Yeah.
That's still RA.
By the bank.
Yeah, I know where they're talking.
We're talking about where JEA was going to be? Yeah. That's this parcel right here.
Yeah.
And that's RA.
Will never change.
That was a special use permit. Again, because I was involved in that project.
Yeah.
I mean, do you want me to review what the uses are that are currently allowed?
I think the board needs to hear.
So any use that's permitted in our one district, single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, public, private schools, churches, parish house, other places of worship, public libraries, municipal buildings, parks, playgrounds, community centers, recreational grounds, home occupations. Then, and. So that's in our three, because it's whatever is in our three is permitted.
And now CA.
Well, there's more for RA. Sorry, that was, that's just in our three. Whatever was, whatever is permitted in our three is permitted in our A. So that's why I was reading. So that's why I was reading our three. It's like an inclusive.
Just.
Yep. And, well, there's more, there's more RA. And breakfast. Rural occupations pursuant to special permit. Special permit, sorry, should have printed this out. But there's some, there's several special permit uses as well.
Nursing homes, hospitals.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't. What you're trying to do, it's not fitting.
All right. Well, that's correct. But I wanted you to know what, if we were going to leave it RA, and what would be allowed there. So nursing homes, yeah, and similar.
My concern is if we go to C A, what other type of activities that can they do at C A that they cannot do?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So does the Alzheimer's that they're looking at across, does that qualify for RA?
It would, yes, with a special permit.
Okay, so that's why that was not changed.
So that's how the, because I was trying to look up some of the history, but that's how the medical center is on RA.
It's a special permit. So in the C A, commercial retail personal service, artisan maker, commercial businesses, including only wholesale establishments, where they're only located in enclosed building, congregant care services, including daycare facilities, homes for the elderly, conglucous homes, nursing homes, gathering places, community centers, religious establishments, public libraries, public-private schools, parks and trails, light manufacturing, outdoor display and storage, only including public vehicle parking lot, garage, indoor self-storage, farmer's market, greenhouse, places of entertainment, arcades, billiards, gyms, sports, recreation complexes, theaters, professional offices, including banking, finance, insurance, real estate, legal, medical, dental, governmental, personal service establishments, barber shops, nail salons, beauty parlors, shoe repair, appliance repair, laundry mat, statue of piercing person, instructional and tutoring services, personal training, yoga, karate, music studio, strike cleaners, restaurants, including coffeehouses, fast food casual and casual fine dining, retail sales, grocery stores, pharmacies, department store specialty shop shops for general merchandise, special permit uses, commercial garage, pet care, landing fields, landscape business, recreational vehicle, used vehicle, vehicle repair, vehicle dealerships.
Why, why is northeast Medical Center special permit in this wouldn't?
Let's see what the definition is.
Medical Center is own? What is its own, the medical center?
RA.
It is.
And the proposed uses of A and E and S and Y don't fall under a hospital, hospital nursing home, anything like that. It's a medical office and personal services. So by the code, it's not even allowed in an RA zone, so even with a special permit.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to figure out what, is it the personal services?
That's what it says.
And the offices.
No, they don't even do a doctor's office.
Right.
There's doctor's office with the medical center.
Questions? Yeah, I have some questions, very simple ones. In your letter to John Dear, you talk about two buildings. One's a 14,242 square foot building, one-story with a walkout type basement. That's a 28,000-foot building you're talking about?
Yes.
That's a little bit disingenuous, to put it mildly. It's a 28,000-foot building, it's a two-story, right?
Well, it's from, from up above, from the parking lot. It's, you're only gonna see one story. In that second story, if you want to say that, you're only gonna see it coming up Medical Center Drive. And all the concerns, a lot of the concerns I've heard in my history with a lot, the three different sites up here, has been to keep it one-story from the view of Starview homes. So from this area, it keep, because when we were looking at the Alzheimer's clinic, or sorry, Alzheimer's home on this site, which it would fit, the big problem was that it was a two-story building. Okay. So when Mike came to us and said, hey, if you put here, there's gotta be one story, but the architects, you know, were like, and again, also for what Mike needs as the owner, it fits by making it two-story, if you will, but with a walkout coming up Medical Center Drive. The advantage also is that it eliminates a lot of earthwork that we have, by making it fit into that hillside.
Does it change the number of parking places you need if it's 28,000 feet instead of 14?
Oh, sure.
That's why it should be there. It's a 28,000-foot building. It just happens to be, you're so concerned about the view. I'm concerned about the fact that it's got 28,000 square feet of space. And then, now here comes the best part. In your letter to John Dear, you're gonna build a second building. 11,332 square feet. And the thing you gave us, that thing has grown to 17,484 feet. Maybe that's just a title, so that's the difference in 6,000 square feet of building.
No, phase two.
It's a 17,040.
No, that's not phase two. Phase two is 11,332.
The second phase is the construction of a one-story 17,484 square foot.
Where do you?
I'm looking at that under phase one.
That might be the storm, is that the? That's a stormwater report, so that is a.
Yeah, because the other.
And I apologize.
Okay, yeah. That's in the first phase.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like that is why we're here.
The footprint of the second building is 1,332 square foot. The 17,000 square feet is the space in the phase one building that is what we're calling right now the personal services. So when we look at the parking count, the phase one building, which is a total of 28,484 square feet, 11,000 of that is what we call medical offices. So we use the one space for 300, and then the 17,44 is the personal services space. So that's one of those more, I don't, it was a title, I apologize.
I have a question. I know you mentioned the view. It looks like there's about five homes that look off from Starview into the, into the site. And my question is, you mentioned that a single-story building is all they would be looking at now. You had a nice drawing picture. What I was wondering is, can you simulate the view from Starview as far as how much, I mean, what does it really look like? The front of it looks beautiful. What's the back of it?
This, this view here is what they'll see from the parking lot. So this would be.
Okay, so that's the, that's the front.
That, this is the front.
So you can't move it closer to the Starview to completely get rid of that view.
Well, we were also, part of the recommendation was to try to keep the building as far away from Starview as possible.
What, what does a topo do from that to Starview?
So. Well. And so. So the slopes down, so from here, we're at 10, the finished floor is gonna be at 1015. No, that's not. I know it's a 15 something. And then it slopes down to the infiltration base. Okay, right, then we also have on the northern boundary, there is the berm that has trees planted on it. The top of that berm is at the same elevation as the first floor of the building.
Is it green in the building?
Right now, any of those trees, I haven't been up there in a while, I don't know, those trees probably 10, 12 feet high right now. So.
So that line in the picture, did you see?
Yeah, see the green? Those were trees that were planted with the RLC project.
I was asking about the simulation, it's like they did with the retirement community, they did that.
Yeah, they did some elevations.
They didn't beat.
And I'm, Devin, really be helpful if there's some way you can do that again here. I mean, I don't know how that's done, but that was very helpful, I remember seeing that. I guess we're getting kind of into the weeds of.
I always say, I don't mean to do that.
Site plan, you know.
Going back to the zone change idea, do we have any idea, and it doesn't, maybe it doesn't matter, tell me if it doesn't matter, of the occupancy of the northeast Medical Center right now? Is it full?
You mean the?
Is all the building space being used?
Are you talking about the council?
The existing northeast Medical Center.
Oh, the medical center, well, that's, I have no idea.
No idea.
I just wondered, like, we have that huge medical structure already. I wonder if you knew when we're talking about building more.
Actually, I had to talk to the parking lot personnel managers to get an understanding of some of the parking that's closest to this particular lot, and I asked them that, and they thought they were somewhere between 90 and 20%. That's not really it. Because I asked them, I said, well, where are you when you're 100% occupancy? Are you, so I mean to the, yeah, one screen up here, I'll show you a little bit of the parking.
He's thinking about the parking. Wouldn't that be able to use?
Parking, and I'm always like, if we have buildings sitting, I don't, I just don't want shopping town mall.
That's definitely a concern, because once you switch, once we recommend it and the town board acts.
Right.
It's C A.
We're talking as own, yeah.
Sorry, yes.
We have a huge amount of, I just, it's good to know if they are using it.
Yeah, that's. And I know.
Interesting to kind of.
I know the community center is 100%.
Right.
Yeah, I guess we still have.
The C A, I don't know.
I just wonder.
It seems to fit that.
What about, I mean, it, here's the, here's the issue, right? For this board and for the town board ultimately. The C A is extremely broad, I mean, literally anything.
Except for CB's words.
Except CB's words. It's, it's a, it's a, is there a different zone that would work for this other than the C A? Because certainly there are. It might fit into a different category.
RA with the special use.
Because it's not a hospital.
Personal services.
It's not in the code for, for the special use.
Suggest a code change would be.
But it may be a code change, but not a zone change. I mean, the problem is the zone, like, I understand what people are saying is, maybe this isn't so bad, and it kind of fits in the area, but, but to zone change it is extremely, it's a slippery slope. If something happens, and this doesn't actually happen, that's, that's what this board as planners need to look at.
That's my concern. Once we open the door, if you're out, we don't want to have something in there that's gonna have a much more intensive usage. It's not appropriate for fairly adjoining neighbors.
I could appreciate that. My response would be, this is a business, I'm in business for 50 years already. It's an established business, it just looks like it was relocated to expand that business. He's not, he's not a thought, he's not looking to do this project in, in a failure and all. You know, you've got a business, you know, this, I've spent business for 50 years.
We are looking at a much less intensive usage, like perhaps neighborhood shopping.
Well, let's, let's talk about what is, what is in the neighborhood shopping.
Well.
Artisan maker, daycare, farmer's market, greenhouses, park trust, professional offices, including banking, finance, insurance, real estate, legal, medical, dental, and governmental, personal service establishments, including barber shops, nail salons, beauty parlors, shoe repair, plant repair, laundry mat, statue of piercing person, instructional, tutoring services, personal training, yoga, karate, music studio, strike cleaners, religious establishments, restaurants, including coffeehouses, fast casual and fine dining, but not fast food. Retail sales, grocery store, pharmacies, department store, specialty shops and shops for sale, general merchandise.
The concern with that district is the ballpark. There's a max building size that is smaller than what, I mean, Mr. Popper needs to make this a successful project. I think the limit for neighborhood shopping is 10,000 square foot building.
This is how nice it is.
Yeah, that's what it is, 10,000.
Where is it?
Yeah.
Usage-wise, we're at 28,000. That's why my recommendation to Mike was sort of the C A, this is the neighborhood shopping because of that.
Neighborhood shopping. It is, it's a different zone, and it has most of what's there.
How many acres is that site in?
All, all structures shall be limited to a total maximum of 10,000 square foot footprint per acre. Maximum lot cover just 75%.
Footprint per acre?
10,000.
Footprint.
Guess I missed that part of it.
Then you would be able to do it.
So that would give us 40,000.
Is it 10,000 per acre?
Oh, maybe that's.
10,000 square foot footprint per acre.
28 and 11 is 39. You're under the form.
Maximum lot coverage 75%. Minimum 50 feet from adjoining property line, minimum 30 feet immediately adjoining, shall consist of a landscape buffer appropriate to circumstance approved by the planning board. I wonder if you want to come back and chat with us and give, look at this and give this board time to look at this. I don't think they're inclined to the C A, I would be very curious.
It'd be nice to have a less intense classification.
I would, I would really hesitate to do a C A personally, but I always speak for myself.
And I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
That's a good suggestion, Jamie. If they could go back and take a look at neighborhood shopping, see if it works.
I know I'm on the wrong board, but I would just, and I don't see, you know, we won't talk about it, but would we have to go back to, you know, would we have to go back and amend our application?
No.
Submitting and saying, hey, based on our information from the planning board, we're going to the neighborhood shopping.
I think they would just, because this is, board is recommending, right? So once it goes back, they're gonna be like, yeah, let's amend it, or not, or they decide themselves.
They don't have anything official in the application.
I think that's an excellent idea. I think that makes sense.
It sure does.
If you're okay with that, then February 28th.
Or.
Come back.
Oh, come back.
To come back, come back.
Okay.
This board has not had a chance to, like, this is the first presentation, first time they've seen it. So they want to make sure they look at. What's here, what's possible.
It's a much less intense usage, and that will be a lot less disturbed for everybody.
If it works.
I think it works.
I think it'll work.
It's the language I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks.
This is a small value of personal service.
Yeah.
Would that be very? With what is in the resort lifestyle building? Yeah, this, this, it's a common fit.
Yeah.
Just wouldn't want to open it up to see.
There's so much C A around it.
Well, in favor of the residential area.
Folks, I have nothing further on the agenda. That being the case.
I'll make a motion in Jersey. I'll make a motion adjourned.
Motion made by Richard and second by Anne, all in favor. Any opposed? Good, nobody's opposed. We stand adjourned until the.